I want to thank all of the council members for making yourself available on a non-Tuesday night. I know that we have a council member who is self-quarantining based on, I think it was a restaurant he was at after the Thunder game, and another council member on the way. So with that, I would like, if you would, City Manager or Catherine Walker, our city attorney, just give us an update on what's in place currently.
Currently, we have a proclamation in place that was signed by the mayor last Friday that sets forth a couple of things. First, it declares an emergency for the city of Norman. This is important in terms of being ready to obtain federal or state funding for an emergency. We did restrict gatherings additionally to gatherings of 250, or less than 250 people, which of course accepts political subdivisions like the school district and the county because we don't have that kind of authority over them. And that proclamation right now is set to expire on April 3rd. Under our code, the mayor can extend that at any time. It doesn't take a meeting and it doesn't take a vote. It could also be changed at any time, but that's what we did on Friday to kind of get this process going.
Your Honor, on top of that, when the declaration was signed, two additional activities were put in motion. The fire chief has activated the Emergency Operations Center in a virtual capacity, so no need for all of those project managers to convene in one room. They'll be able to operate remotely through a virtual product called Zoom. The Police Department has also activated Incident Command, and they have basically a 24-hour reporting period. And these are different circumstances than most EOC activations and Incident Command activations in that typically there's a lot of operational activity that takes place. And under this particular pandemic circumstance, there are more planning and logistics activities taking place. But with those two systems operational, it provides the appropriate venues of communication to our county, region, and state partners. It provides us access to resources should we need them. So staff is on top of the situation from that operational standpoint, and we are in communication with our counterparts.
Thank you. Friday, we were, I believe, the first city to declare a state of emergency. Several cities across the state, including our capital, Oklahoma City, have followed suit, and several more are lining up as well. Last night, Governor Stitt declared a state of emergency for the state. And there was a phone call today with mayors and city managers that I hoped would provide guidance on how, as a state, we can approach this moving forward. As we've seen and are continuing to see, as has been the case for the past several months around the world, things are changing overnight, and that is no different here. Last night, Mayor Holt suggested, I believe, 50 people. And then today, in President Trump's press conference, the recommendation is 10 people. And he also is recommending that people do not go to bars, restaurants, and things like that. So I'm very glad that we had this special session already scheduled because we have further guidance and recommendations, and I look forward to discussing with my colleagues on the direction we take now. So, who would like to start? Councilmember Bierman?
So first, I have a question for city staff. This might be a departmental question. This might be a city manager question. Can someone go into a little detail for Norman residents about the city's preparedness plan to ensure city services remain operational in the event of a more restrictive quarantine? What's our staffing plan?
By Wednesday of this week, we are assembling those essential staffing limits, department by department. Those will be reviewed and evaluated on Wednesday, and it's information that is being gathered through the Incident Command system over in the Police Department. And we're looking at every level of service, sewer, water, solid waste. All the public safety services are always essential services. We are looking at the relationship between recreational activities and school activities. And we are under the impression that a conversation took place this afternoon about the extension of spring break potentially through the first week in April. So we'll be evaluating what recreation services will be available during that time. In our conversation, if we didn't want the children to congregate in school, it didn't make sense that they would come congregate in a rec center immediately, you know, after normal school hours. So those conversations are taking place as we speak. But regular services that most of us receive on a daily basis will continue uninterrupted.
Great. And along those same lines, has there been any discussion, particularly among the Utilities Department, about options for residents who might be struggling financially? I know many have already started to struggle, and so what are we doing to ensure that people's water, as an example, is not turned off?
OG&E made an announcement over the weekend that they would not be in the disconnect mode of operation, at least for the next 30 days. That conversation was initiated today as it related to our water customers. The trigger has not been pulled to alter our payment or disconnect schedule, and that's a conversation we'd love some direction with council this evening. We do know and recognize that when we see some of our accounts, when they, you know, hit the $300 range, it makes it nearly impossible for some of those ratepayers to get caught back up. And that's, you know, we're grappling with that particular reality right now.
So I think, at least in my personal opinion, I think that we need to be activating that as soon as humanly possible to at least let people know that for the foreseeable future, we will not disconnect them. A lot of Norman residents work in some kind of travel field or travel tangential field, and so are already feeling the hurt because of changes in spring break. And so I think it would certainly do a lot to provide some reassurance to the community that we're taking every step we can to ensure that their, if we're considering them essential services, are staying on. And at this point, I think it's important for us to kind of, I hate to use the term, but kick the can down the road in terms of how much of a bill someone is able to rack up. We don't know how long this is going to last. We don't know exactly how soon true relief is going to be coming for particularly employees who are dealing with this, but also for business owners. And so I think it's really important to reassure businesses and their employees that we will not be disconnecting them from an essential service, either for their daily lives or for the necessary operation of their business.
Be happy to take that direction from council, Your Honor.
Thank you. I do also want to just take an opportunity to say that, you know, while everything is changing so rapidly, we are trying to consolidate resource guides for residents. Norman Community Relief on Facebook is working on a resource guide that talks about everything from OG&E, and then OEC's announcement today that they're going to be suspending cutoffs indefinitely, and that they will be suspending all late fees as well. The major telecommunications companies have all come forward and said that they would do the same, and some are even increasing internet speeds for people. But there are a lot of service organizations in this community who are acting up, acting and getting ready to engage. And Norman Community Relief is going to be also trying to identify those individuals who are falling through the cracks, particularly in our disadvantaged communities, and our disability community in particular. There are some who have private caregivers who have not been able to show up since last week. So we have members in this community who have not received their necessary personal hygiene for a week now. So trying to get all of that together, it'll be available online. I did talk to the county today. They have not talked about suspending evictions during this time, but this is now on their radar, and they are trying to work on a plan on how to address the jail and particularly pre-trial detentions now that jury trials have been suspended for the time being, which means people will be sitting longer. And I know that there are not too many times that jails could be made comparable to cruise ships, but this is one of them in terms of the transmission and the spread of disease. So I'm glad to know that our county partners are thinking about these things, and I hope that they will take action sooner rather than later as well.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Holman?
Okay. I had the same questions about city utilities. Another portion of that I may want us to discuss is, I would like us to also freeze late fees, but also consider when it is, when there is a recovery, how we can help people catch up because some people won't be able to work, they won't qualify for paid leave, and the meter's still going to be running this whole time. Even if we're not going to turn it off, they're still using water, the meter's still running. So when it comes due, that could be a double bill. And I think we need to have some sort of way where we, some sort of special payment plan that makes it easier for people to catch up that's not, you know, that's different than normal, I would think. And I would definitely support enacting whatever we can as soon as possible that would mirror what other utilities are doing. The, I've had some questions about the municipal court. What is going on there? If there's still dockets?
Dockets have been canceled, and people are being rescheduled for mid-June. They are still open in the lobby, so people can come in and pay their tickets. They can pay tickets online. We're exploring if there's potential for a judge to issue an administrative order to allow some deferred sentences on certain charges that wouldn't normally be allowed at the counter, to try and help ease that burden and spread that out so that in June, it doesn't, we aren't so far behind. Yeah.
So no warrants issued if people don't come in tomorrow?
No. I mean, if you get a ticket, you still need to come in and set your court date by the date on the ticket, but the court date will be for late June, July, August, potentially.
So the municipal court itself is staying open if you do get a ticket?
Yes. Feel free to come in and make a payment.
But there won't be any actual court proceedings in place, okay?
That's correct.
Definitely had a few questions about that. Testing is another one. I know, city, we're not providing testing, but I have received a lot of questions about it. I have, I've received questions of concern from people who can't find it, can't get it. They feel like they have symptoms, and they don't have any way to get it. They're being denied. They haven't traveled. They don't meet certain qualifications. They don't have a personal care physician, certain things like that. So I don't know if we have any information from a city standpoint. I know some has been shared on, I think, the mayor's social media about that. But I don't know if we have an official statement about testing. What are people to do about that?
Anything from your most recent conversations?
Yes, I spoke to Norman Regional today. We did a live interview-type video on the Norman Regional Facebook page, which I then shared to mine, and I'm sure the city will share it as well. With the testing, we're still funneling everyone to the Oklahoma State Department of Health. And the same hotline is what we've been sharing uniformly. And the phone call today says they're still working on drive-through testing, but we have nothing yet.
I had a lot of questions about that. Other comments I would make, too, is that I think the economic concerns are a real big issue here. I think even more so than many other states because of our reliance on sales tax revenue. And when people are self-quarantining and businesses have to close, I think that's, you know, for the city of Norman, it's around $5.5 million a month that we get. And as Councilmember Bierman mentioned, a lot of our population work in service industry, in restaurants and bars, and work hourly jobs, don't have a salary, don't have guaranteed wage if their business is closed. I manage a retail store myself. I mean, I'm concerned about what happens if we have to close. I know our store can't afford to pay all of our staff for multiple weeks if there's no revenue coming in. That's for sure. I don't know if a business like mine, that medical marijuana, would qualify for any type of loans either because of the nature of the federal law. So there are lots of concerns I have about the impacts of this. They're outside of the health portion, which is a very big deal, and we do have to do everything to try to mitigate and slow down the spread of this thing. But I'm very concerned about the aftermath potentially of businesses and the large chunk of our population that lives on an hourly wage and doesn't have savings to stay home for a couple of weeks. So I'm very concerned about that, and I don't know what exactly the city government, I think this is really a big government thing. The federal government, I think, is really going to have to do something here. But any type of plans that we can come up with to help, I know we've got groups of citizens that are doing a lot of work to help those in need, but we're a big town, and there's a lot of businesses and a lot of people that are going to be hurt by this, that are already hurting by this. And so those are just some of the comments and things that I've been thinking about this weekend. And so any kind of information that we can get across to people and make this as easy as possible for people to understand and find the services that are available, just hopeful we can make that as easy as possible. Thank you.
Counsel, we got a comment back on our livestream. If everybody can talk directly into the microphones, we're not coming over very clearly.
Trying to lean in this time.
Yeah, we'll all lean in, so thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you. So Councilmember Bierman sort of alluded to our Norman Community Relief Facebook group, which is setting up some pretty good infrastructure for social safety net. And we kind of set it up last week, and 20 or 30 people has grown to about 2,000 people on this group. And so I'm happy to share this information with emergency management. But we have four teams of people, one, two, three, four, that are willing to coordinate relief efforts in the private sector. I know this is, I'm a city council person, but I really think it's important that we get very creative in times like these. We have a supply and donation team, a service agency team. We have case managers that have mental health professionals on these teams, and a drivers team that are willing to do porch drop-offs and pickups. So I don't know who we need to coordinate and make sure that we're not doubling efforts, but that's something I would make sure that, okay, Chief King, I got you. We also are, have been working with, I've spoken with the Chamber of Commerce to make sure we have a safety net for our businesses starting to come up. I've asked him to put in three teams. I don't know. Those were my suggestions. I don't know what you ended up with. But I want to see help in the tech area for businesses like mine that have had to move to some online functions that maybe you're not familiar with or comfortable with, using Zoom platforms and that sort of thing. Labor-sharing resources, which I would like to see our city work together, our businesses, and I think this is a chamber function, work together to shift those hourly employees around. So if we're having restaurants move to a delivery-type service, maybe you need people in there that are packaging these items, and we need people to deliver them and those kinds of things. So as doggy daycare, people aren't needed anymore. Maybe coffee delivery is more in what we're going to have to do for a little bit. And in that, I want to see a salary guarantee. And I know this is probably a federal deal, but I know with as much noise as we can make, if we can get some sort of salary stabilization for hourly employees, that's where I want. I would like to see grant programs from the federal government, so I'm talking to you, feds, give us some grant money to create some impact grants for utilities. I'm going to imagine that our power companies and gas companies are going to need these things as well. What else did I decide that I needed? We're doing some online, there's a lot of creative online folks out there to keep people entertained. There's some online workouts. There's some online kid-reading things. We're posting all of that on our Facebook group. We're trying to minimize, how do I want to put this? Blame gaming and fighting and crap like that. So we are, we have a group of not-elected officials that are monitoring that page and keeping the information relevant for the most part. Park, part? I had a question in there, but I'll go, I'll move on to let somebody else talk. But that's what we're doing over here in the Norman Community Relief Facebook group, so go check us out. And I would say, don't expect a bunch of answers yet. We just are building infrastructure and getting people in place to do the things that are needed whenever we all get quarantined.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilwoman Patron?
Okay, I've got several questions and comments. So the first, I heard on the city utilities, OG&E is doing a 30-day grace period on disconnects. OEC? Okay, so same. And then I, too, am supportive of the city of Norman not disconnecting people and waiving late fees. We definitely need to remove the stressors that we can, and water is life, so. I would be interested to know what authority the city has. Councilmember Bierman spoke about the county and evictions. What authority does the city have for banning evictions? I can see this spiraling. If people can't get to work and they're paycheck to paycheck, the last thing we need is a whole bunch of people living in their cars. So what can we do? And then I have more questions, too.
I haven't looked at that specific issue, but there are a lot of ways in which the city is preempted in terms of landlord-tenant relationships, so that causes me a little bit of concern, but I'm happy to look at that and see.
Yeah, I would like to know under emergency procedures, if there's something, you know, if we have some leeway in that, not just necessarily forever going forward, but under a state of emergency. The next part, feeding into that, we already have a large homeless population. And so what can we do to ensure, I don't even know what the best practices would be right away, and I don't know if task force is meeting in the morning. I hope that we are, or at least if we're meeting online where we can speak. But we need to come up with something to make sure that those residents of ours are still receiving, you know, meet with our community partners, make sure that their soup kitchens are able to have, whatever we need to do to make sure people are fed and that we're servicing them the best way that we possibly can.
Michelle and Lisa in Community Development Block Grant were on top of it, and I posed that question. They gave me a response. I just don't have it at my fingertips, but they are on top of that particular response for that community.
Perfect, thank you. Next question is hospital capacity updates. Mayor, have we, do we know of anything about, that we can answer for the community as far as preparedness for NRHS since we met with the county last?
Nothing has changed at this time.
Okay, I will say that when we met with the county the last time, I guess it's 10 days ago now, something like that. I don't even know. It's all one big blur at this point. But they did express confidence that they had quite a bit of gear and that they were one of the first to be, I'm probably going to get this certification wrong, but basically what it boiled down to was that they were one of the first hospitals in the region to be a certified Ebola answer hospital, basically. So they were able to just tweak their protocols. They already have permanent personal protective gear and had gone to full protective gear in the hospital at that point in time, so 10 days ago, anticipating that they might be having someone come in. So basically, long story short, I felt a lot of relief hearing where they were at. So they're not just using the N95 masks. They have the full-on they're not just using the N95 masks, they have the full-on getup. So, um, I just wanted to see if we had any updates from then. Um, I guess, following up on the last legal question, um, do we have any, um, further ability to take any sort of municipal action as far as if the mayor wants to, or feels like it's necessary to call quarantine-type of things, or close certain kinds of nonessential businesses? Um, that makes my palms sweat, but if, if those became something that was, um, necessary, what is she able to do, or us as a body able to do, under emergency?
Title XI specifically covers quarantine, interestingly enough, to my surprise. Um, and it says, "The municipal governing body may enact and enforce such ordinance, rules, and regulations necessary for the protection of the public health that are not inconsistent with state law, including, uh, regulations to prevent the introduction of contagious diseases, and may enforce quarantine laws." Um, so, there's authority there, and under, uh, Chapter Two of our code, I would point out, neither of these sections have really been tested. There's not a single case testing this Title XI provision, which was adopted in nineteen seventy-seven. Um, and similarly, we've not used, uh, Section 2-111 of our code for something like this. Um, it was obviously written for natural disasters of the kind we're used to, tornadoes, ice storms, that kind of thing. Um, so, it's got some pretty interesting provisions related to that, and rioting, not necessarily pandemics. So, uh, but it does give some authority to the mayor to do things to preserve, uh, the health, uh, property, public peace, et cetera.
Thank you. Um, I guess my, uh, I will call on Mr. Scott Martin on this part, too, um, to help, but I was hoping that maybe we could compile a list of the small businesses, or businesses, anyway, um, that have maybe traditionally been brick and mortar, but they are looking to continue those services, um, or goods, whatever it is that they might do, um, on an online capacity, um, or delivery capacity. However, they're getting inventive to not, um, you know, to still be able to comply with, uh, social distancing, um, but also meet the needs of the community. And in having that as a resource that we can, as the public, access easily, but also that the city, um, can help get circulated widely, um, so that we can, uh, limit our economic impact, but also, um, still have those comforts of the city that we're used to having, if we can do it safely. So, I would really encourage that, um, even if they're not members of the chamber, just all kinds of commerce, if we can, um, you know, put those together for people to, that they have an access of a guide there. Um, oh, and the other thing, when I, we talk about, one of the things that I think this is gonna be a challenge for the city, that I'm actually, um, looking forward to us meeting, is, um, I think we've become overly reliant on social media and Norman transcript, to get all of our messaging out. And that's, in a time like this, um, not gonna be enough, because we already know that, um, some of our most at-risk populations are not using social media, um, or they might use one platform somewhat, and not any of the others. So, I would really, um, like to encourage staff and city manager to come up with some ways that we can quickly, um, reach our, uh, community better, because we've had this problem in the past as well. Um, and this is a perfect time to be meeting that challenge. We've got to be able to reach people. And on that note, I wanna encourage everybody, if you haven't already, um, signed up for Alert Norman, please do that. Now, that's an emergency-type of situation, alerts, and those may be something that we need to reach people with, with quarantines, but we really need to beef up the number of people that are using that. If there could be a, um, non-emergency-type system that works, um, in tandem, maybe that would be something that, um, we could all, uh, have more communication on that platform as well. But, anyway, um, we'll put some direction out on the City of Norman's website. I know, I shared it, but maybe the City of Norman can share it again, uh, get that promoted out, make sure your neighbors are on it, because, uh, the city can text you. Um, and then, let's see, from, just some of the things that were coming to my mind, I think that does my questions for, right now, but some of the comments were, um, check in with your neighbors. Um, one of the things here, and I mean, pick up the phone, it still works, we all need to make, if we can compile our errands, um, so that we don't have, you know, every single house going out and running to the exact same place, we can compile trips, we can pay for a lot of things in advance, um, but our, especially our at-risk neighbors, um, go to the store for them, you know, go to the, the drive-thru at Walmart or whatever, pick up those items for them. Loneliness is a killer, and not just a virus, it's a killer, loneliness is as well. Um, so, just, if we can make sure that, especially the people that are living alone, that they don't feel completely isolated. Um, there's a great organization out, um, that was, it's called, um, anxietyvirus.org. Um, they have put this together specifically for COVID, um, and they're seeing a massive spike in, um, calls and texts to the suicide hotline, um, especially with people who already suffer from anxiety disorders. This is a, anytime that you have a disruption in routine, which I would pretty much consider this the massive disruption in routine, um, it really causes a, accelerated spike in those, um, in those conditions that people already suffer from. And so, um, I would just encourage people to look at all the resources there. It's also a live, interactive, um, blog, that there are trained professionals that will answer questions, um, just whatever they may be, uh, their coping mechanisms, basically. Um, reach out to your families and extended loved ones, lift each other up, collaborate, neighborhood building exercises. This is spring, get out, get some fresh air, maybe you can exchange, um, stay busy, stay productive, uh, for mental health issues for all of us, but also, it's, um, you know, maybe you can have porch drops of cuttings for your garden, just whatever, that bring yourself together and have, um, something that you can see, whether it's a house project, um, but that you've seen yourself be productive, uh, and I'm encouraging my household to do the same thing. Um, we don't have to sit around and see how many numbers are showing up in our community. We can, um, social distance and still be productive. Um, report price gouging, please. I know that Norman PD, if you see people in the community that are price gouging on essentials, that should be reported, um,
State Attorney General.
Yeah, State Attorney General. Okay, the telephone number for that is four zero five five two one twenty twenty-nine. If you see any price, price gouging, turn it in. Um, that's all I'm going to say for right now. I'm sure I'll have more to say later.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hall?
We've already covered quite a few things that were on my list, but I did want to, uh, come back to one of the things that Councilmember Patron mentioned, that, um, I hope we can, um, really address, and that's our communication plan as a city, because, um, one of the things I think we all are aware of, um, not everybody is on Facebook, um, not everybody, um, is, has access to the Norman transcript. And I do think we have some good resources through the city, like signing up for Norman News, um, uh, the alert system, but I, I have some concerns that with the rapid, um, and evolving situation that we have, I, I'd like to try to figure out a way that we are speaking as one voice, at least for the City of Norman. And I really wanna commend the mayor, because I think you've taken the leadership here in trying to get out information. Um, but I have some concerns that it's going out to social media, and I think we really do need to address, um, where, where, where is the most updated information, um, going to be coming from as we, um, settle into, um, what's coming for the next few days and weeks, and maybe possibly longer? Um, are you going to be the spokesman for the City of Norman? Is our communications director going to be coordinating a plan? Do we need to coordinate with, um, Chief King on, um, you know, the Emergency Operation Center? Um, I do think that we, we need to have a plan that we can communicate to our residents and where they go. There is such an overwhelming amount of information that's being circulated, some of it accurate, some of it not accurate at all. And I think that we do need to find a way to speak as the city and know who it is that is speaking on behalf of the city, because, um, I think we're all trying to disseminate information, but I feel like at this point, you are getting the most up-to-date, accurate information, and then, how do we disseminate it from there? So, I'd like us to really put some thought into that, and if we can beef that up and come up with other ways to communicate with our residents, I think that would be really helpful, to be intentional on who is speaking for our city. Um, and list of resources and that kind of thing, which I know we're trying to get beefed up there, but that's a big concern to me, because, um, we know that a lot of people do not have access to all of the information that's being pushed out, so I do worry about that. Um, and also, with, um, working with the Chamber of Commerce, I think there are so many Norman residents that are desperately gonna be looking for ways to support our local businesses. And, um, you know, however creative we can be in our partnerships with the city, with the chamber, with the Downtowners Association, with all of the different groups that we have, um, I know there are many more than just that one, but, um, any way that we can communicate to our community on how to support our local businesses would be most welcome, because I think, I think the, um, I think the interest is there, and the commitment is there to try to help, um, support our businesses however we can. But I think any kind of, you know, again, coordinated effort and letting people know how we can do that in a safe manner, um, would really be helpful at this time. Um, the other thing, um, that you also touched on just briefly, is, uh, there are a lot of homeowners associations in Norman, there are a lot of neighborhood associations in Norman, some more active than others, but I think this is a really good time to, um, dust off your, um, phone list, or, um, get, get, get coordinated within your own neighborhood, if you have email addresses or ways to communicate, um, to, um, not only take care of yourself, but to take care of each other. And I think that can start in lots of little neighborhoods across Norman, um, so maybe we can work on some resources that we can add to community relief, and I'm happy to help with that. Um, so, I think that's another way that we can be looking out for one another on a micro-type of level. Um, and, let's see, it's something else, but I can't remember what it is. Oh, yes, on the water bills, I do think that we need to, um, definitely have a plan on how to, uh, give some relief to our residents, just like the other utility companies are coming forward and doing. I know there's a lot of challenges for that, for our city budget, but I think that we need to have a coordinated effort there, and to, again, make sure that people understand what, what we are able to do, um, to, to help with that as well. Um, I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Councilmember. We did, as a team, on Friday, before we, uh, issued the emergency, uh, talked about the water bill, so that's been on our radar for some time. We do have Scott Martin, the President of the Chamber of Commerce, and I would like for you to come up, if you are, uh, willing, to give us an update on your efforts. And then afterwards, I think it would be nice to get Chief King, if you could explain a little bit more about what you're doing with the EOC. And I would also clarify that the videos I've been trying to put out are also available on our YouTube channel, which is not social media. Uh, so, we're, we're doing the, the best we can on that one. So, uh, Mr. Martin, if you would go ahead and fill us in.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. And thank you for, so many of you for referencing the chamber. Uh, we certainly can't be the voice, uh, for all issues that are in the community, uh, but we should be the voice, and are the voice for business. And so, we appreciate that opportunity to partner with you and other groups, uh, to help through this particularly challenging time. I wanted to give you just a brief update on some of the things we've already initiated, uh, that I think you'll be pleased about, and then also just, uh, quickly talk about a few novel ideas that you probably have all already heard of. And I'll begin with those. Uh, we've, people have talked about gift cards, you know, going to a business, buying a gift card, uh, doing that now and spending it later on. Help them out today. Uh, the mayor did a fantastic job of coordinating with some other local business people to help incentivize that, which was fantastic. Uh, we have a lot of businesses in town, uh, that are membership-based, so, uh, pay, you know, pay those memberships. Those are vitally important. Shop locally online. Uh, there are stores that have an online presence, and they're locally based. Uh, granted, thankfully, due to, to laws, uh, online sales are, you know, to the benefit of the city, but when we shop locally online, we are helping out local employees and business owners. Curbside pickup was mentioned. Uh, that's another option, and there's a lot of businesses that are going to that, and so, uh, to keep that in mind. Just today, I was, um, on a, I was also similar on a conference call with the governor, and he mentioned a opportunity that I really wanted to drive home, uh, with you, with those that might be listening, 'cause I think this is really important to our businesses. Uh, as you know, the Congress and President has identified a little over eight billion dollars to help out the crisis today, seven billion in low-interest loans. But to access those dollars, uh, we need at least five businesses in Oklahoma who've, who've experienced loss to trigger the recent declaration that he's put into place. No doubt, that will be easy to come by. We also need at least, uh, one business in each county to, um, who have experienced a loss to help trigger even further dollars. Now, seven billion dollars out of the eight, a little over eight million is in low-interest loans. To do this, uh, businesses need to go to www dot damage dot ok dot gov. Damage dot ok dot gov. It's a simple form, uh, that this, this is, uh, a, a site that the state is utilizing to help identify businesses in Oklahoma who've experienced a loss. Now, on top of that, though, uh, and this is something where we can advocate, advocate together, uh, we need direct assistance to individuals and businesses. So, um, join me in contacting our congresspeople and the president to, to make this happen. Okay, online resources. Uh, normanchamber.com. We have set up a page on our website specifically dealing with, um, the COVID-19 crisis. If you go to normanchamber.com, we have a button there with numerous resources for individuals and businesses to avail themselves of. Starting tomorrow, uh, we're all thinking alike, so we're, we're, we're trying to, to get a grasp of this, but starting tomorrow, we'll have an online forum for businesses who are either offering, um, discounts, or changing the way they do business. Uh, they'll have an opportunity to, uh, share that with us, and then we are going to, uh, share that information with the rest of the community. Uh, we're working on exactly how we do that. It's certainly, our initial intent is to put that on that, uh, on that page, the landing page on our website, but also push that out to social media. So, there'll be a, a rolling list of businesses who are potentially offering reduced services, who have changed their dynamic, instead of doing, uh, uh, sales inside, that you can go get the, the item and pick it up at the curb, which I, I've already heard of businesses who are no longer, uh, offering food or other services at the counter, but they are taking it to the curb. Mayor, did you have a comment for?
That was my question. I, I would like the form to, I mean, even if they already offered curbside pickup, I want them to be filling it out, too, because I know I would like a list of, okay, they deliver, and that's curbside pickup. So, just make sure all, they realize it doesn't have to be a change. If they're already doing it, they can list that.
Gotcha. We actually already have one that had emailed us, and, and, uh, goes to Councilmember Wilson's point about these teams that we're putting together. It was an IT person who is willing to offer their services at a very reduced price, which I think is awesome. So, um, people can go, again, go to normanchamber.com to access that forum tomorrow, and, uh, businesses will be able to go there and share with us, uh, what they're doing to help, uh, meet the needs of their consumers. And we will continue to push out all of this, this information and more, uh, partnering with you in this endeavor. Uh, it's not gonna be easy, and I, I share your deep concern for our businesses, and more importantly, the employees, uh, that, that are, that are at those businesses. Uh, we are putting together a team of financial experts to help out with those that might be needing assistance in SBA lending. Uh, we are also putting together- be needing assistance in SBA lending, and we are also putting together an IT team, and then I think the greater challenge is this workforce sharing team, and I, it's a great, I think it's a great idea, and we're going to work on that, too, because we, we are going to have a lot of displaced employees who are going to need work, and so the other two are a little bit simpler, but we're going to try to make something happen in that regard also. We stand ready, the Chamber of Commerce does, to assist and, and help you, and our, those links and opportunities are not just for our members, they're for all businesses and all individuals to access and avail themselves of. We want to stand shoulder to shoulder with you throughout this crisis, and we know we'll get through it, but we'll probably have a little rough waters along the way, so. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you. Before we dive into questions, I would ask that our communications team, as well as the transcript, share information on that, again, so we hit not just social media, and I know you have a fantastic newsletter, hopefully the districts will, will push it out as well, because not every business is in the Chamber, but I know that you will help every business, regardless of their membership status.
Absolutely.
Does anyone have any questions specifically for Mr. Martin, Representative Martin?
Just Scott.
Before we go back to Councilmember Petron.
Hello. I was just going to ask that, following up on what the mayor had said, when you do hopefully work with the Norman transcript, I would really encourage the transcript to drop paywalls on anything COVID-related. We need to be able to get the word out to people, and if they are not currently subscribing to the paper, we can't reach them. So anything, whether it's businesses, COVID-related, or city, whatever, we need to be able to reach them.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments or questions for, okay, Councilwoman Wilson?
I would like to be included on your labor force sharing team to help think creatively in that area. That's why I have wacky jokes all the time, because I'm a creative thinker, so please put me on that team.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anything else for Representative Martin?
And I would just ask for people's patience, this is evolving, and as you said earlier, it feels like it's changing by the minute, and so we will, our, our, the way we communicate, the way we share, the way we solicit information will continue to evolve, so our flood, our first attempt at this tomorrow may change tomorrow afternoon, you never know, but we'll, we're going to be on it.
Well, thank you for your efforts, I appreciate that. I also want to take a moment to thank all of the businesses and events that have gone ahead and canceled or rescheduled or closed on their own accord, because they are understanding how serious this is, and I sincerely appreciate that. We are very much all in this together, and there is zero reason to think that what has happened literally around the world won't happen in Norman. That is irresponsible at this point. Back to our councilmembers, Councilmember Scanlon.
One of the things that may help us along the way is the donations that are going on Washington right now, we've heard, "Call your congressman, call your senator." Well, the Senate is debating this AIDS bill as we speak. One of the things that was not in the House version, but is at least being discussed in the Senate, is the elimination of the payroll tax for the rest of this year. That's immediate bucks for people. We'll see what happens, I'm not saying one way or the other, but it is something that's under consideration, and there's certainly more to come, very timely to contact senators at this point in time. A couple of concerns, I guess, one of them having to do with hospital beds. I, I know that I was comforted by the hospital presentation at our meeting 10 days ago in terms of the isolation ward that they have set up and their experience with Ebola and certification thereof. One of the scare things that's going on right now, if you pay any attention to the news, is that as this persists and goes on until June and July, as some are hypothesizing, that we run out of hospital beds. The number of 32 sticks in my mind in terms of what the hospital indicated that they could isolate and, and treat. I wonder if that's enough, I wonder what the contingencies are, and I'd, I'd like to hear more about that. Communication. Scott just talked about it, most people on the dais have talked about it, vitally important, obviously, and the Chamber can play a role. Certainly, there needs to be a single point within the city to provide this information, but one of the, one of the avenues that we can pursue that it's pretty obvious, though it hadn't been mentioned, is that's the churches. They contact a lot of people throughout the city, and if we keep in contact with the churches, they have their own communications systems, if you will, and they'll help us get the word out. Neighbor helping neighbor was something that was mentioned here, and it warmed my cockles in the, the tail end of last week, as, as this business was, was spinning up. Two ladies in my neighborhood sent a, a letter to, via the, the association's Facebook page, saying, "We're here to help. Call us at any time, we'll run an errand for you, we'll come and hold your hand." That's the kind of thing that will get us through this. Hats off to them, but, but that's the kind of thing that in neighborhood associations, and neighborhoods, period, association notwithstanding, that will really get us through. Homeless was mentioned, quite for a different reason than, than the, the virus scare. I had occasion to talk with April Hyple at, at Food and Shelter last Thursday, and one of the things she talked about was their preparations for all of this and, and their anticipation of increased business, their not hoarding, but certainly stockpiling, piling supplies and being available and helpful to, to be there for the homeless. That was treated in an article in the transcript on, on Saturday, as it turns out, but how timely was that? Here is an agency, and that's just one, Churches, the Salvation Army, other, other agencies are there to help as well, but the heart is there in this town, and hats off to April for anticipating it, but congratulations and praises to, to anyone that's a party to that in any way, shape, or form. I certainly favor the, the kind of relief that's been talked about in terms of any city charges that may be levied to people that can't handle it, I'm sure that we can work out plans with, with individuals, we ought to be good at that. Restaurants perhaps are, are suffering, I have a granddaughter that works at Louis' and talked to her about how is business, and as she indicated, it's down, what do you expect? They're dealing with it, they're still open, but people are keeping a social distance in the restaurant. But the people that aren't at Louis' are at Crest, and they're trying to buy toilet paper. I happened by there today, I was running some errands, and my wife called and said, "You need to get me some salad," and I said, "Yes, ma'am," and stopped by, wading through a mass of humanity, I've never seen the place as crowded as ever, and had occasion to talk to one of the gate guards, if you will, at, at Crest. He said, "It's been like that for five days, just nonstop, and the people are wearing down." The employees, if they're, got it a little bit easier at Louis', they don't have it easy at Crest, people are really busting their humps there to keep up with the demand. And, and I mentioned supplies, or I will mention supplies, they're out of toilet paper. So people are buying paper towels instead of toilet paper, and that, I believe, Mr. Utilities, is a bad deal for us. One of the things we ought to address is, please don't do that, but we might anticipate some stoppages, pun intended, in our system, an unintended consequence of this, this virus, but a reality that we as a city have to cope with.
You're welcome.
I think that's all I have for the moment, there may be more, oh, one, one more thing, and digressing to our meeting of 10 days ago, and this maybe steals some of Chief King's thunder, but, but for all of the good that we heard from, from the public health people from the state and county, and for all of the anticipated preparations that the hospital had gone through, the thing I was most impressed with was that our police dispatch had protocols in place to deal with this already, we were prepared. The fire department have the necessary protective gear in their trucks today and had it there weeks ago in anticipation of this. Dudo the ambulances. I'm impressed with, with the anticipation and, and the forward-thinking of these agencies. That really does help us, we're, we're off to a running start there, and I praise that very much. So Chief, if you want to say more about that, you were about to be asked about things such as the EOC operation, but, but kudos to you and, and, and the ambulance service and the police department for the work that you're doing.
Thank you, Councilmember. Before we head to second rounds of questions, Chief King, would you like to come on up? And I don't know if we've had the, the NIMS training, so that's why I think we're asking a lot of questions, and things are being organized, and they don't know to go to you, and a little update, I think, would be very helpful right now.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your leadership over the last couple of weeks. I want to thank our city manager, too, for providing a, a solid base of leadership for me and for our staff. I will say that about a week ago or so, city manager ordered me to go ahead and set up our emergency response structure. So when we talk about emergency response, you know, we're, we're used to tornadoes, we're used to fires, we're used to police-related activities, and so we have to start looking at setting up an emergency operations center and an incident command center to deal with a pandemic, and that's, that's something we don't have a lot of experience with, okay? So just to, to kind of provide some insight, the emergency operations center is a conduit to receive information from the policy group, to pass forward to the command post, to, to the incident command center. It's also a place where incident command, who is, who is operating at the operations level, so they're dictating what is going on out in the field, can address the needs that they have in the field. And this emergency operations center can then coordinate with state officials, county officials, to get the, the supplies, what we need in the field to conduct operations, okay? So that's what that structure looks like, and, and as I said, the city manager ordered me to go ahead and get that process going. I immediately got with our friends at the PD and commandeered them to go ahead and set up incident command. They're very proficient at that, they have good staff in place to, to run that, and I attended a meeting today and saw firsthand that that is very much underway and in good hands over there. So Major Shattuck, Captain Barber, Major Teicher, who is not here, we're talking, and, and we're talking frequently, and I can assure you that they are putting the framework in place from an operations perspective that will tackle this the best way we know how. And so as we continue on, there will be more pieces possibly added to that incident command structure. This will be, we talk about lead agencies, and in a situation like this, it will be a police, generally a police operation as we go forward. So that'd be the lead agency, and then it will, it will morph into more of a unified command as we add structure to that, as we add different personnel from different departments into that structure. At the emergency operations center, we're virtual, so that's a new thing. I spent a lot of time this weekend, our IT folks, working with me, I have to give credit to Tim Powers and his staff for getting me the tools I need and the folks in my staff, the, the tools we need to go virtual with that. So we got that established today, we tested it today internally with my staff, and we have launched the first meeting and got those invites sent out to pertinent city staff and community partners to attend that this coming Wednesday. I can tell you that right now, we started a conversation within the, the management team about a week and a half ago, what does this look like moving forward inside of your department? You need to start talking about continuance of operation, you need to start looking at cross-training, and we need to start looking at, at worst-case scenarios and have those difficult conversations. I can tell you that in, inside the fire department, we're having very radical, very unbelievable conversations about what this looks like going forward, and we have to do that, we have to face it head-on, we can't fear, and we have to have a plan. And so that's what's happening right now, and I know it's happening in each department, and those plans will come together, and I can tell you that we have, in my opinion, the best staff that you could possibly put together for an incident like this. Even though we're, may not be well-versed in it, we may not have a lot of experience with it, we've got very talented people at the forefront of it. I think I answered your question, but I'd be happy to take more questions.
Chief King, thank you. Sorry. Thank you so much for your work on this, it's, it's very impressive how, how quickly we've come together, and that was exactly why we did the state of emergency when we did, and thank you for being innovative. I think we've seen a lot of innovative approaches to technology for both businesses and how we do it in local government, and I don't think these things will go away. I think that we have a situation where we've been kind of forced to think outside the box, and the, the benefits of, of doing so, I think, will stick around after this is passed, which it will. So thank you so much for your leadership on this.
Yes, ma'am.
Does anyone have any questions for Chief King specifically before we dive into round two? Thank you, Chief. Councilwoman Bierman.
So I, first, I got a question that came in, I guess it didn't come over the YouTube Live, but I got the question about it. This is probably going to be for Sean, because I don't see Taylor here. OU is not running their buses, which means that there are a decent number of Norman residents who, right now, are not able to get on a bus on the apartment loop and the research loop, some of whom do rely on the bus to get to churches for food donations, and they're starting to get nervous about what that's going to look like for them. So have we, or can we, have any conversations with OU about either maintaining their, those loops while they are closed, or, better yet, paying us to run those loops? I, I worry about the Norman residents who may not live on campus, who live on those routes and don't have the ability to walk to a bus stop that does have a loop that is operating.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wright. Yes, we were on the phone with the OU officials yesterday, and then again this morning, we were, it was a little bit of a curveball. Frankly, we didn't expect the CART operations to be in the category of nonessential services, but it is at the University of Oklahoma, so you're correct, we did lose all of the, what we call the university routes, the four routes that we, that we don't run or can't run, frankly, and it's the combination of the university routes and our city bus routes that make up our transit system today, as you know. The, there is no opportunity, as we've learned from Mr. Glenn, the Director of CART, to reinstate those services, he didn't have that option, so the university is out of the transit business, at least for the foreseeable few days or weeks, as I understand it. We have begun to have conversations with our Embark partners, and I, I just, if I could just pause for a moment and say that we are in full service, we are not stopping our, our bus systems, although I'm, I'm kind of surprised it's taken this long to get to the public transportation topic. As you know, it's been a, a very heavy topic of conversation during this crisis across the country, for obvious reasons, social distancing is a real concern on public transportation, but I'm proud to say that in, in cooperation with Embark, we are in full service, Oklahoma City is in full service, the streetcar is still running, all their parking services are in operation, and we're working very closely together to accommodate those concerns about, for instance, cleaning the buses, we are doing additional cleaning and sanitizing of our buses. On the topic of the University of Oklahoma this morning, the key topic was, are we going to be able to operate in your building? We haven't been able, allowed to do that without university personnel there until this morning, and they did make a special exception for the city this morning. We appreciated that, but we were very concerned they were going to have to shut down our service because we didn't have a building to operate, as you know, and, and maybe most of our citizens know, we don't own our own operation, our own building, we were leasing that from the university. So they, to their credit, they did make special provisions to let us operate out of the building, which also means we need to clean the building. We've not been doing that, they've been doing that. So we, we worked together today to try to implement some cooperative cleaning services and additional cleaning services. As you can imagine, we're running about 50 Embark staff people and a couple of our own people through that building throughout the day, 15 hours a day, so additional cleaning of the facility, the buses, the, the garage, and so on, has been implemented today. Finally, to get back to your question, I don't have an answer for you yet, we're still working on that, we do not have additional buses. We do not have additional buses. They will not let us use their buses at the university. So we are trying to look at that situation. How could we modify our routes, if possible? That's difficult to do. It really is. It's difficult just to operate what we have with the buses and the resources that we have today. But we are looking at that. I hope to keep you posted in the next day or two with any developments in that area. But at the very least, I can tell you that we are not seeing the need to suspend any of our operations, although the announcement today by President Trump to reduce gatherings to 10 people has us a bit concerned. I would, finally, I'd like to just mention, kind of brag about our Embark partnership. This morning at 5:00 AM, we were dealing with the development of a notice. This was placed on all the buses this morning at first the start of business. It is a notice of temporary service rules. This was in response to the developments over the weekend. So I'll give you an example, just some basic common sense things that we're trying to indicate to our riders. Maintain at least three feet between yourself and the next person. You can imagine that can be a concern on a bus. No more than 50 people on any single bus. That may be something we need to talk about in coming days because now the congregation of people rule has been reduced a bit. Exit the bus in the rear door, enter from the front. So we don't have people bumping into each other. Things like that, just basic things to remind our folks about. And so we posted all those today, and we'll continue to post information on our website and on the buses as it develops. So I hope that helps you. I'd be happy to answer any further questions.
I do. I do really appreciate that. I hope that, as we're looking at solutions to this, that we are thinking about immediate-term solutions that could extend longer than any of us might be expecting at this point. Because if OU ends up having to stay out longer, if Norman Public Schools ends up having to stay out longer, that's going to have an impact on the residents who live there and rely on that public transit service. One thing we might consider doing, you want to talk about creative solutions. Norman Public Schools has a whole ton of buses that they're not doing a whole lot with right now. Granted, they don't look like ours. They don't really operate like ours. But hey, we're providing buses for free right now anyway, so we sure don't have to worry about how to equip a public school bus with a fare box. So we do, I think, have the possibility for some partnerships with some of our other community partners that are also dealing with changes in their programming, which reduces the need for some of their fleet. So I just want us to kind of have an eye on the long term because I think America's finally starting to come around to the fact that American exceptionalism does not extend to viruses. And so we should expect this to be at least a medium-term problem.
Right.
So I really appreciate the work that you're doing to try and get those routes addressed. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And then I did want to mention one thing. I know it's been discussed a couple times about a bill now in the US Senate to provide some relief. For those who might have been similarly unimpressed with the traditional media coverage on that bill, the bill number is HR 6201, for those who actually want to see the language for it themselves. It's called the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. It includes emergency paid time off, sick leave, and FMLA leave, and also expanded SNAP and WIC benefits. So I'm going to just kind of go over it just briefly for people who may not really be aware of what's included in it. It does include an additional $1 billion to SNAP, WIC, and the Emergency Food Assistance Program, some of which will go to schools for programs that they are offering. Some will go to expand eligibility and dollar amounts for SNAP and WIC. This is, of course, in the House bill, as we all know from Schoolhouse Rock. Senate can pass whatever they want, and then they have to somehow figure out a compromise between the two. But this is the House bill that passed. It also directs $2 billion to state governments to expand unemployment programs, waive work search requirements or waiting periods for those who are diagnosed with COVID-19 or who have lost their jobs due to the pandemic. It also includes a new emergency paid leave program for workers who are sick, quarantined, caring for a sick loved one, or a child out of school to a coronavirus-related closure. It is for one month, extended up to three months. It would be 2/3 of the employee's salary, but those who are receiving funds through unemployment-related unemployment programs who are receiving pay are not eligible. And then lastly, there is an emergency paid sick day program, which would be 14 days of sick leave required to be given by employers for those undergoing quarantine, caring for a sick loved one, or caring for children out of school. For businesses with less than 50 employees, the cost will be reimbursed by the federal government, but the initial hurt will come out of your pocket if you are a business owner. So I do not believe that that is anywhere close to enough or anywhere close to comprehensive, but it is a start. So I don't know exactly where the bill is today. I've been wading through hundreds of requests for supplies and coordinating teams and making hand sanitizer. Thank you, OU, for some help in that regard. But this is a start. And my guess is that what the Senate bill passes will not be identical. So please take a moment to reach out to your federal representatives, share your story, and tell them how important this is for you as a family, for you as a business, and for you as a resident of this state, because there's going to be many of us. They're now starting to predict 1 million job losses in the second quarter because this is not going to be ending anytime soon, and the economic impact of this is going to be felt far longer. Loans are a life raft. They are not the relief that many businesses are going to be needing. And that's really what I'm going to be aiming for in my conversations with federal delegation, is loans are helpful, but they are not a solution. A solution is relief, and that's not something that we have historically done as a country. But we're seeing some pretty significant shifts in policy perspective, which, as a political scientist, has been absolutely fascinating for me. But we're going to continue to update these resources. We are going to put them online. And thankfully, because of Councilmember Hall's reminder, we will be working to put them on Nextdoor, to find an email list, to reach out to churches and HOAs, the Rotary Club, whoever we can, to try and disseminate this information because, as I've said way too many times in the last week, we are all building this parachute as we fall, and we're all doing it together. So hopefully, that provides at least some clarity on what's happening at the federal level because, as Councilmember Holman said, it's not going to come from the city, and more than likely, it's not going to come from the state either. So let's all look and push upward and try and get some relief.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilor Holman.
Would echo that same thing. I would say a lot of small businesses in the United States can't afford an any-interest loan. So a loan doesn't really help in a lot of cases if you can't afford to repay that loan and the half a percent interest that goes with it. So that is definitely concerning. I agree. There's got to be some actual relief, I think, that's going to have to be, you know. The buses is a big concern of mine. Those campus routes are in Ward 7. There are low-income and disabled residents that live in the Emerald Greens Apartments off Dewey Avenue down by Reeves Park that the campus routes, they ride the campus route to get to the Brooks Transfer Station so they can get on the city bus. But, and that is about a mile walk from the Emerald Greens area. So not accessible for a lot of those folks. I would definitely be open to any kind of out-of-the-normal realm thinking, if it's a school bus that we could use to run a little shuttle or something, I'm not sure. But I would be open to exploring any potential options that we could. There might be a school bus driver that needs some hours, so. And then, and it may not even need a full bus for that route. Maybe we have a smaller bus, a van. I'm not sure that we could coordinate something to get people up to the Brooks Street Station. Echo some of the comments of my colleague about flushing things in the toilet, not just paper towels, but also baby wipes. Don't flush those things. They clog up the whole thing. And we definitely don't want to experience what it would be like if our wastewater treatment plant stopped working. So people buy all this toilet paper, but if the treatment plant doesn't work, toilets doesn't flush, so all your toilet paper is pretty worthless then, I think. So unless you're going to carry it on a big backpack with you when you go hiking into the woods or something, so. So be cautious about those types of things. The evictions is a big deal. I have heard from a district judge who believes that all basically nonessential docket items will be suspended, that basically people that are waiting a hearing to get out of jail, they will have those. But they believe that evictions would be halted. I would encourage us to reach out to the county commissioners. I don't know if that's their decision or not, or if it's the court administrator's job or what. But if we could just extend the, could you, is there anything you guys can do to, you know, halt that for now? Because a lot of Norman residents, a lot of Cleveland County residents will probably be relieved to know that they won't have to worry about that for the time being. So anything we can do to reach out to the county on that, I think, would go a long way. So that's all I have right now. I appreciate everybody being here. I appreciate all the staff and all the work you're doing to keep our city government and infrastructure running. And hopefully, we can get through this together. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilor Scanlon.
With regard to the courts, it is my understanding that video arrangements will continue. So that's going to help us somewhat. The in-court sessions will not, but video arrangements will. The bus business, I was happy to hear that OU opened the door, but I have to wonder out loud. We use that as a maintenance facility, and you said nothing about maintenance, Sean. What's the story there?
Will you repeat his response so everyone can hear it?
Sean responded to my question about maintenance, that it is in operation when they open the doors for the operations center. Maintenance could continue.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hall.
One of the things that we haven't addressed that may be coming when city manager Pyle was discussing the disorganizational plan with the city of Norman, and that's how we're going to be protecting our city staff. And if you have to go to reduced levels of staffing, and tying into that, what is the current thinking about our regularly scheduled meetings? I know a lot of meetings have been canceled, but I also have noticed that some are still being planned. So I'm just wondering what the current thinking is about our meeting schedule and how that impacts the staff having to be with the public, not only in meetings, but in their daily interactions with the public and how we're going to be protecting our staff.
I'll lead with the answer to that. I asked Brenda Hall, our city clerk, to cancel all meetings that weren't calendar-driven.
Okay.
So that is the first step. All chairs of the boards and commissions have been notified. That applies to our city committees as well, oversight, finance, BACA and community planning and transportation. In the short phone call that we did have with the governor today, one of the few topics that was addressed was making possible adjustments to the Open Meetings Act. So we don't have to also put ourselves in harm's way as well. So that's all I have on that right now. But that's where we are at, at the meetings. And so I'm looking forward to guidance on that, and I'll turn it over to the city manager to talk about how we're protecting staff.
Absolutely. So the conversation with our school district began last week and what their plans were for potentially keeping the public schools closed longer or extending spring break. It was indicated that that would be driven out of the state Capitol on recommendations from the state superintendent of education, and that took place today. So they'll be on an extended break through April 6th. So our coordination with our recreation programs currently, we're operating our spring break camps, and we don't want to slam the door tomorrow without providing parents the opportunity to find alternatives. So we'll be gradually winding those programs down. Personnel will be asked to come back to work, and we'll begin a cleaning program for those public facilities. So when they are returned to service, they'll be as clean as they've been since the day they were brand-new. When it comes to our cash handling and where a lot of contact is made with the public through our utility billing function, the credit card payment headache that we went through over the summer with that breach by the third-party credit card handler, that's all been resolved. All of our online bill payment services have been fully restored. So that venue to pay bills is now back up and running. The drive-through window in our treasury function, fully operational. And this afternoon, we discussed a different path of travel for customers on foot to get to the treasury windows without having to walk through the entire building. And there's one door that's typically used just for employee ingress egress. We'll sign that differently to allow the public to come in and go directly to the payment windows with the rest of the hallway just, you know, strapped off in tape so we can control that exposure. The folks in police and fire have actually established protocol, depending on the nature of the incoming 911 call. And we're getting an awful lot of calls through the action center and through dispatch about people saying, "I coughed. Do I need an ambulance?" I mean, it is that extreme of response that we're getting. So they have protocol in place to kind of triage those calls over the phone to determine if they're just going to coach you through seeking help through a primary care physician or if they're actually going to send the ambulance your way. But those protocols to protect our public safety, first responders, is in place and in full cooperation with our ambulance service as well. So when it comes to essential services and limiting exposures, even our parks maintenance folks currently, if we've got a parks maintenance worker on a mower kind of out by themselves, the exposure is low. And right now, we don't think we've got a lot of folks out there enjoying the parks or those public spaces either. So we're evaluating those department by department. And Wednesday afternoon, we'll have our final conversation on who needs to show up and who probably shouldn't. We were happy to hear that Councilmember Bierman put her fingers on that bill number. Those were pieces we've heard through the media. And I had a call into Congressman Cole's office about finding that bill number so we could track that two-weeks paid leave in the event we ask you to quarantine yourself or you find yourself exposed and need to quarantine. That that's the mechanism we're hoping will be quickly pushed through the legislature and on the president's desk for signature. Our concern has been, you know, for employees who may not accrue sick leave, if we tell you to go home, my ability to pay you is limited, you know, to accrued balances on the books without such a piece of legislation. So this really helps us solve a potential problem that doesn't, it's not present today, but we do anticipate it happening. Our employees all go home and are exposed to their spouses and children. You know, we have employees whose spouses are nurses and work in the healthcare field. So we believe it is a matter of time before that exposure presents itself in the offices, and we will respond accordingly.
Okay. Thank you. The only other comment that I wanted to make at this time was I am in full support of the stance that we've taken as a city and the leadership from our mayor and our city manager in being aggressive and assertive and not waiting for guidance from other agencies because I think this type of leadership for our city is really important right now. And I hope we continue in that manner to push the envelope and be ahead, be ahead of flattening that curve, so to speak. And I also think it's an opportunity for our city. I think we're already seeing it in a multiplicity of ways of coming together as a community and as friends, as neighbors, as family, to embrace the challenge ahead of us and to do everything that we possibly can to keep our community safe and our city employees safe. And any measure along those lines, I am fully in support of. So thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you, Councilmember. That is the perfect segue to something I wanted to get all of your feedback on tonight. There are cities around the nation that are taking tougher measures. I will not call them extreme because we can either take these measures now or we can take them later when it's too late. We have a confirmed case of community spread in our community, and it happened before spring break. I know for a fact that there are students, despite OU doing the right thing and closing for two weeks after spring break, aren't going home. They're coming to their home here in Norman. So last night, or today, effective tonight, Dallas released the following measures. Bars, lounges, or taverns and private clubs are closed. Dine-in restaurants may sell food for drive-through, drive-in, takeout, or delivery only. Entertainment venues like theaters and commercial amusement inside are prohibited. Gyms and fitness studios are closed. No community gatherings of more than 50 people. I mentioned earlier, I'm very proud of how proactive our community has been in already canceling events and shutting their doors, and I know that is a difficult decision. It was said today in our phone call with the governor that we are married to sales tax. And that is, that straight-up means that this will hurt us harder in Oklahoma than it will any other state. Yet we were 49th to declare a state of emergency. So I am asking for feedback and support from council in enacting tougher measures to battle this because it is here. We knew it was coming. There is no reason to panic. But there is clearly, as there always has been, a reason to be proactive. So I look forward to hearing your thoughts on this. Councilmember Patron.
Well, I have my button to speak, but I guess in that segue, actually, the two are related. I have some heartburn about moving full steam ahead for a desperately needed bailout on Norman Forward, when it's not, with the exception of the bus situation, an absolute necessity at the moment. If we're going to ask businesses to close, and we are all, I mean, everybody that's commission-based pay, or hourly workers, everybody's battening down the hatches to try to weather what's in front of us, I don't think that it's prudent to send, assume that we're going to be at a ballot asking for money for these projects in June. I think I'm going to go back to saying that August is a more realistic timeframe for that. If, by the same token, we're at a place where we're thinking that, and I happen to agree with you, people's lives are far more, there's no dollar amount of what your life is worth. And I don't, even though people are not necessarily high-risk, who are hanging out in a bar, if they're younger, whatever, it's the people that they are interacting with in the community, or bringing back home, that are in the house, that they are high-risk. And so to me, yes, you are on the side of caution, absolutely. And it's going to be painful. But I don't see how we then turn around and say, but we're still going to be meeting and pushing as fast as we can to send something to the ballot to cost people more money when they may not even, we don't even know if they're going to be getting included in the aid package that the House just passed, because 80% of workers aren't. So I guess I'm talking about two issues, because my button was pushed to ask the question on that, of where we're at with this election. For one, I don't even think it would pass. And that would be really tragic, because these projects are important to our community. And I just, I see people saying, now, wait a minute, you want me to make my property tax more expensive? And where are your priorities? Why are you worried about, you know, whatever project? And at the same time, you're closing my favorite restaurant unless I can do carry-out? So I just want to make sure that our messaging is expressing the priorities, that their lives are what we're considering here. And I think that that's something that everybody needs to have a real gut check about thinking about. Plus, sending them to a line, to even think about, we're going to send you to go stand in line at the ballot box, even though we have a lot of precincts, it's still, I don't know. Anyway, so yes, I'm supportive. But I really implore this council to think this through tonight.
Two thoughts on that. Number one, we have an election in a couple weeks in Ward 6. So we need to be thinking about how we're going to address that. Even if we ask everyone to go absentee, it's too late, I believe. And the demographic that normally operates polling places are the demographic that's in the most danger right now. So let's keep that on our radar as well. I believe that's a conversation with the county election board. In terms of the bond issue, that is on the agenda tomorrow, and I expect we will have a full conversation about that. So I'm not, I'm not deciding that tonight, but I appreciate you bringing that up. And the only reason why I did not bring it up is that's what's on the agenda for tomorrow, for the meeting. Because of Open Meetings Act, we're still going to congregate and enjoy together. But thank you for those comments, and thank you for your support. Councilmember Beerman.
So I, too, have been... Am I on? I can't hear it. Okay. It's like I can't hear my own feedback. So I've been thinking along these same lines, because I don't feel that the guidance we're getting from the state or federal level has really been clear enough. That is certainly no fault of our local county partners. This is all trickle-down information, and what's trickling down hasn't been great. But at the same time, for all the reasons that we've talked about up here, I think the timing of that is really important. So I would think that if we could make it known that we are planning to do this, so that individuals and businesses have an opportunity to prepare and put some processes in place, figure out how they're going to take online orders, work with the chamber, so that we can get some kind of resource guide for people on what this is going to mean for the various businesses that are going to be changing their practices. I think it's really important, not just because of the people who could die from this, but even if, and I'm saying even if, because I don't feel that we've gotten good enough guarantees that testing really is free at this exact moment, treatment is not. And so if you are someone who is young and is fairly healthy, you could still require very significant costly treatment for this. And if you are uninsured or underinsured, let's face it, most of us are underinsured, because Oklahoma doesn't have a law against balance billing. That, to me, that is also a primary reason why we need to take steps like this. Because it's not just, it's not just the number of deaths, it's the amount of medical debt that people are going to rack up, because they touched a door handle that someone else touched, and it happens to affect them differently. So I do think we need to take action, but I really want to be sure that we kind of shore up whatever we can do at the local level for our own little local safety net, to make sure that the businesses that are going to be the most impacted by this either have ample warning, or have an opportunity to change the practices and sign up through the online ordering app that they will need to try and weather this. So to me, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And I would also like to know, maybe Brenda knows this, maybe not, what is the date that we have to decide what's going to happen about the April runoff election?
You're really already too far past that.
So I do know...
If you cancel an election right up to the day, you certainly have the authority to do that. But as far as changing procedures, probably, and the way they do it, it possibly is too late. It's too late for the absentee, but...
I'm interested in pushing it off. You know, we have seen in other, I mean, Ohio, literally tonight, got a judge's order to stop their election for tomorrow, and their absentee ballots and early votes will just be held. They'll still be counted. But I would like to know what the process to do that would be, to move it to June?
At this stage, we could just request it.
Okay.
Now, to move it to June, we're going to have to call it again.
Okay.
Renotise.
Right.
And do all of that. But we can request that it be moved.
Well, I would like us to consider that, because I don't know what the first week of April is going to look like. But I am really concerned with the people who might be standing in line to vote. And I am very concerned about the people who are going to be standing there administering the election. So...
If I, if I may, Councilmember, if anything, and again, we're clearly just exploring this, maybe push it back a month, because now you can sign up for absentee ballots online. And so that, we could at least get that. But yes, I'm...
I mean, but do we want to move it twice, in the event that nothing changes in the next month?
You can't have a, you can't have a May election by the calendar.
Well, fortunately, swearing date's still July.
Right. That's why I was thinking we do have June. Little gallows humor never hurt anyone. But I do think that's something we need to consider.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Wilson.
Why do those two always get to go first?
They're faster.
They're just, I'm going to just push my button when I get done. Let's push it again. Okay. Well, as a business owner of four businesses that are customer-facing, we've made significant changes in our business models across the board. We happen to have one drive-through coffee place, so that's pretty much, we're good, but we're wiping down everything. And that, but we moved our doggy daycare to a curbside pickup. We have a couple of people in our organizations that are immunocompromised. And so we're being very careful. We've pushed one to work from home, and some things like that to keep that happening. So I think it is imperative that we reduce, and I'm saying this as a person who may go bankrupt in this, seriously. And, but we can recover from bankruptcy, we can recover from economic downfalls. We can't recover from death, generally, most of us. So we, we need to be very serious. I'm sorry, my humor is really wacky. But I put my money where my mouth is. We closed one of our coffee shops today, just because it's the one where you can go in and sit down. We are doing online deliveries. We're changing to an online app for our coffee. And the doggy daycare is, we're minute-by-minute over there, because it's hard to do online dog care. But we're trying to minimize that, that touch, or whatever you call it. So yes, I 100% support being very proactive right now, even though it's going to be very painful. And that's why all these other things need to be in place. That's why our state leadership has got to do their job and protect us, and has got to provide the funding, and has got to push on our federal government. So all you people out there that know these people, fricking call them, because a ten-year business like mine is gone like that, because it's just, it can be. So, and that's, we have a very robust community of small businesses. We've pushed that for years. And a lot of times, those small businesses do not have the margins to provide that leave, do not have the margins to just be closed for a month, you know. So we really, but I believe in it. I believe that our community will suffer shorter, will flatten that curve. We won't be out as long, and we will minimize our economic and our humanity impact by doing that. Also, I second, third, fourth, 100% support not talking about bonds for months.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Holman.
So I'm definitely for taking more precautions than other governments are. I do have concern about restaurants and bars being the only one, because those are the two sectors where the people really, really can't afford it. I mean, servers don't even make a minimum wage. They make $2.13 an hour, and it's been that way since 1990. So even if they got two paid, two weeks paid, they're going to get 200 bucks? I mean, I don't even know. I mean, when I worked at a restaurant, servers got checks that were $0.00. They survived completely on tips. And I understand that even if we didn't do this, people may not even go anyway, so there wouldn't be a point of them being open. But I do have concern, because there are lots of places where people gather. I mean, Walmart has hundreds, thousands of people coming through it all day, every day, 24 hours. We're not going to shut them down. I don't think we should, because people need to be able to get stuff. But there are lots of places, offices, office buildings, all over the city, that have hundreds of people in them all day. And we're going to shut down restaurants and bars who have less people coming in and out, and have workers that depend on it more than I would say the office workers do. And so Walmart's a big corporation. They're the biggest corporation in the world. They can afford to pay people. So my concern is that there aren't plans in place yet to address what will happen if we force businesses to close. Like I said, I think the market, or not necessarily the market, but forces may cause that anyway beyond our control. But I am concerned about not having anything in place to respond to that sector of our citizens and employees that will be really impacted by their job being forcefully shut down by the government. So I think that doesn't mean that we shouldn't, because we do have to do more. If our state and federal government aren't doing more, then it is up to the local government to do everything we possibly can to mitigate this in our community and keep it from spreading to other communities. But those are concerns of mine about making sure we are taking care of everybody, and that no groups of citizens in our community are being overlooked, or falling through the cracks during this difficult time. So I do support you, Mayor Clark, in whatever decision you need to make in regard to that. But just, we're going to have to work together here. I think we've all expressed that, too, so...
Thank you, Councilmember. As someone who had her first waitressing job at 16, and bartended her way through college and law school, I completely understand, and have had many of those zero checks myself. However, we can only control what we can, and it is a matter of time. So hopefully, as we're transitioning to online and delivery, servers perhaps could transition to delivery services. So I do want to take a moment before our next comment, just to emphasize how proud I am of this council, how thoughtful they have been in protecting not only residents who might get sick, but residents' livelihoods and wellbeings. And I am very, very proud to sit up here with you tonight. Councilmember Scott.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. And I apologize for being late tonight. I also had my first waitressing job at 16, and have input myself, you know, through college, cocktail waitressing, and have been working since I was 16. So I understand what it is like. I'm also from the country, so you don't get to tell people, like honestly, where I'm from, you don't, you know, tell us our curfew, when not to go out, things like that. Like, you can tell us precautions, you can shut down things, but good luck, is what I will say about that. I support whatever decision we make, taking precautions. But what I feel like the conversation has been oriented around, because I was watching before I got here, is that this has been very business-oriented. Many of the council members up here are business owners, and I think that's where our perspective is. And I think that goes to show, you know, our dependency upon sales tax is extremely volatile. And so being dependent upon businesses contributing to our community rather than the people, we prioritize profits over people, and I think that's clearly becoming a problem, if it wasn't already. And so I just, I really think that we need to consider that. I think we need to be providing more services to people. And I'm grateful, when I was listening earlier, that some of our small businesses are actually contributing back to the community. You know, we're not going to cut off utility services, we're not going to evict people. That's a beautiful thing. But it was like, what was mentioned earlier, we can't stop, you know, Walmart, or Target, or these large corporations from operating. But what we can count on is our small, local business owners to give back to our community and not actually cause more detriment to the people who are already the most vulnerable. As far as bonds, I still think we should anticipate government as usual, business as usual. We should, because of the actions that we have taken, bless you, Mayor Clark, again, for declaring a state of emergency before anybody else, you know, and taking those precautions. Because shutting down those events, and despite the impact to the city and our sales tax and our general fund, that is what, you know, is going to protect our citizens the most. So we need to assume that we will bounce back. And so we need to consider the fact that we are still going to have an election on, you know, April, or in April, and we're going to have an election in June. Nothing is stopping just because coronavirus is quarantining people. We need to assume business as usual and government as usual. So I still support moving forward on that. And I just think we need to transition our conversations from here on out, from a business perspective to a people-oriented perspective, because there are people who are of a low economic status who are actually at risk, not just businesses that are at risk, but actual people at risk. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for your input tonight. Councilman Scanlon.
I mentioned a while ago that I have a granddaughter working at Louis', and I would hate to see her lose income, but I understand the necessity. I do have a question, actually too, relating to that. If we decide to close the bars and restaurants, for how long? And what would be the criteria for reopening?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. Under the guidance of President Trump, which, yes, under the guidance of President Trump, 15 days. He said 15 days to reduce the numbers, and that's what we're going to start with. My current, I believe it was April 3rd, we, as we've covered from our city attorney, Ms. Walker, we can extend it at any time. But for now, that is, that is where we're going to start.
Because I just hate to see this open-ended, and I do like the idea of there being some kind of criteria that we look to as proof positive that we can safely resume. The other comment I would have, while I have the microphone, is, and Councilmember Holman alluded to this, we're not going to do anything with Walmart, and Crest, and those types of stores, Sam's. But witness my visit to Crest earlier today. People just lined up elbow-to-elbow. If we're worried about problems in a restaurant, what about the 600 or 700 people who are elbow-to-elbow in Crest? Do we look to stores such as Crest, and Walmart, and so on, to enforce a traffic flow of customers, so that we're not so crowded, so that they're not exposing? I mean, that's something that I think ought to be considered.
That is a great question as well. What we have seen in other countries that have shut down are the essential businesses are open. It's pharmacies, it's grocery stores, and it's banks. I think that by sending messages like the one I intend to send with the... I think that by sending messages like the one I intend to send with the updated requirements, we'll hopefully spread the message to our residents that this is serious. And so, even if Walmart limited going into the store, there's the line outside that I've seen pictures of. I was happy to hear that Governor Stitt is asking the grocery stores to open an hour early, and that hour is only for our elderly population. I hope that will extend to immunocompromised as well since they are in the same category, so there is that. But people just need to slow down. That is where we're at, and so I appreciate your comments on that. Councilmember Holman.
That did bring up one question for me about if businesses are going to be closed for extended periods of time, is the police department, do we have a plan for beefed-up patrols around those businesses that we know are going to be boarded, you know, maybe not literally boarded up, but closed for a couple of weeks? I mean, I already had a few questions actually about, so, you know, if no business is going on, I've got stuff, valuable stuff still in there.
Major, can you share with us your thoughts as it may relate? Of course, this conversation is brand-new.
Yeah.
So, we're all kind of walking through this exercise together. If a handful of business types are going to see reduced hours of service or closure, is that a thing we can kind of wrap into normal patrol activities?
That is absolutely something that we can help out with. You know, up to this point, what we've been working at internally at the police department is figuring out how we're going to provide service if we have people that get quarantined. And so, that's, right now, to this point, that's been our major focus. So, we're going to do the best we can with the people that we have available to help everybody out, and that's why we exist, right, to provide safety and security for our community, and that's really what we're going to try to do.
Well, and the police department interacts with as much of the public, if not more, than any other department, so that definitely is a concern I would have, too, about the police department's manpower and that, exactly what you mentioned there. But then, yeah, if we have a lot of businesses that are dark now, that are normally open, you know, that potential of being targets of crime, that type of stuff, so, thank you, I appreciate the answer.
Yes, sir.
Excellent point. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Wilson.
I just want to make the point that businesses are people, and if my business goes under and we go bankrupt and 30 people lose their jobs and we pay above minimum wage generally, we have paid time off and those kinds of things for people. So, this, I think, goes along with the extended shortening that curve so that we aren't out for as long of a time. If we do what, that's kind of painful right now, maybe we get back in the game in two weeks or a month. The other thing is businesses, you know, we are going to be able to access some, and I hope our businesses are, work like our business, you know, the businesses in our community work as Annie's Rough House does, which is, my concern is, when I borrow money to get out of this, because that's what I'm going to have to do, is borrow money, and I have to pay that back, that money is to pay my employees, one. I'm not building a brick wall or, I don't know, putting new kennels in or anything like that. I have to borrow money to pay employees. My account is overdrawn $4,000 right now because I paid my employees first. I didn't pay me. I didn't pay that lady down there who I'm partners with. We paid employees first. And our bank, our local bank, the ones that we like to vilify, is the one that's footing that bill for me. So, I get that we want to say that, you know, companies and businesses, whatever, but those are what pay the people to be able to get through these things, and my goal in this whole deal is to be able to borrow money and keep people's pay stabilized, which is why I said that earlier, stabilizing hourly employees. I have very entry-level employees most of the time, and stabilizing their pay is imperative because those are the people that are paycheck-to-paycheck generally, they're just now starting out in the world, they're just now making their first car payments and stuff like this, and this can crumble them. So, I don't care about me, I can bankrupt out of this. I care about those people, as I know many of our businesses in this community do, and I think that's why the chamber needs to, you know, help us, you know, do that, and they're putting things in place. So, I just want to clarify that so it didn't seem like I want to close businesses because I want to save my business. I want to close businesses so we aren't all sitting here out of work forever, because if I bankrupt, then those employees never come back to work.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Patron.
I was just going to add that I feel like if there is a mechanism in place in those businesses that, I mean, I don't want to shut down their business per se, so if they do have online sales, if they have other ways of servicing, maybe for an example, Councilmember Holman, if there is a way that those patients can still buy the product without actually, you know, having a bunch of people inside, if it's maybe one in, one out, or if there's a drive-through window, I mean, I don't know how that works, but if you can come up with some way to service those patients, I think that the businesses should have that opportunity, that, you know, we are, you know, there are many brick-and-mortar stores that probably could come up with some ideas. So, I mean, I would, the second part of this, so I don't want to just close them, but the second part would be, I am supportive of, you know, if we can give a 24-hour or a 48-hour advance notice, because I believe that they should have the opportunity to collaborate with their employees, maybe they can come up with some ideas together of how can we do this, how can we, you know, here's our email list, you know, we need to start reaching I guess I would definitely support giving a very short timeframe where they can get their docs in a row.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Beerman.
Well, and it's also quite possible that this will serve as some of their advance notice, so if this was something that we were going to be looking at in the short term, I think shooting for later this week would be appropriate. The chamber's already got things in the works, we've got things in the works, kind of a bunch of council members are doing all their own helping things on the side, and we've got ways to help assist where we can. So, I think that ensuring a little bit of time and leeway, we're also noticing that a lot of the online ordering companies themselves are recognizing this. We noticed that with the coffee delivery app today. That poor woman on the phone was so stressed, she was not even back from vacation, but she was taking sales, customer service calls because there were so many coffee shops that needed an option. So, they're waiving fees and giving us the ability to provide stable income for employees like ours who has a mother in the oncology ward up in Oklahoma City. She needs her job, but she also needs it to be done in a safe way, and so finding that balance is really important because we should not be thinking that things should proceed as normal. We should not be thinking that everything should operate the same as it has been for the foreseeable future. That is not what all of these countries that have come before us has shown to be the case. They have all made very significant changes to their lives, to how businesses operate, to how governments operate on all levels, and to think that that is not going to be the case here is not actually looking at reality. And that's also why I do agree with several up here that because of the long-term impact of this, we should not be thinking about bonds. We're going to have businesses close. There are already some who have closed, both in our community and in other communities, whose employees now don't have any options because they can't collect unemployment right now. We have businesses that are closing, we have people who are out of work and tacking on several hundred dollars a year to their property taxes for facilities that they will not be using in the foreseeable future, not the least of which is because they haven't been built, is, in my opinion, not a prudent idea, but I do think we need to take the steps in the short term because we're going to see a lot of impact of this. I am very concerned about medical debt for people who are impacted by this. I'm very concerned with the people who are going to have family members who become sickened by this and who need care, and for those family members who lose work, and so when you have a family that lives in a community and you're caring for all of them, that's a lot of burden to carry on their paycheck, and we have several of those people who work for us. And so, I'm calling Tinkler Federal Credit Union tomorrow to push off my car payment, and I'm going to be calling my mortgage company tomorrow and pushing off my mortgage payment because I didn't get paid so that our employees, regardless of how few hours they work over the next few weeks, can have some sort of stabilization in their lives because I have a personal safety net that I can rely on, and I'm lucky to do so. I'm lucky to have family who are going to be able to help me out. The majority of our employees are not, and that really is our focus, all of us. And so, I think that it's really important that we take these steps now with businesses, with our April runoff election, and with this discussion that we're having about the bonds, because now's the time to act. It's not the time to pretend like it's not going to happen here, because it is, it's already happening, and it's only going to get worse from here. Thankfully, that's the only clear guidance that at least we've been getting from the CDC, is that it's going to get worse. And so, I think we need to act like it is and take steps accordingly, but also provide some time for these businesses to prepare.
Thank you, Councilmember. I appreciate everyone's very thoughtful comments on this. We definitely need to look at our upcoming April election, so hopefully we'll email update on that soon, on how we're going to handle that. But at this time, effective immediately, the 250 number is down to 50. I understand that St. Patrick's Day is tomorrow. I understand it is ordinarily a fun time to connect with your neighbors and a fun kind of American cultural tradition. Now is not the time, friends. Now is simply not the time. Effective 48 hours from now, the entities that I listed earlier will be considered closed unless they meet the qualifications that I listed. Given that we only have two true bars in Norman, I will ask that restaurants close at 9:00 p.m. Otherwise, they're going to operate as normal, and the students will be back before we know it. I'm also going to ask that our city staff and Public Works works with the Chamber of Commerce to establish marked-off parking spots for to-go curbside pickup for local businesses. I have gotten questions about that. Hopefully, that will facilitate some of the, again, delivery and curbside options that we will see an increase of. I would also call on all Oklahoma cities to take measures like this. It does not take a crystal ball to see what is coming. I know that there are people watching this meeting right now to see what Norman is doing. We are not afraid to lead the way, we know what is coming, and I sincerely hope that you, too, will take actions because there are no walls around our city, there are no force fields. We all care about Oklahomans, we all care about Americans, we all care about humans, and it is time that we rise to the occasion and act like it. This meeting is adjourned.[1767.41]